To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So just a reminder that at six o'clock will be a journey for the public hearing. We're recording the meeting. And so.
Or you'll have a recess before six o'clock.
Yeah, right, exactly. All right, so breathing and approval of minutes from December eighteenth, please. Oh, I'm sorry.
Everyone want to bow their heads, please?
Thank you.
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you, pray you for the beautiful day you gave us today, the winter that we're having so far. We pray that you watch over everybody, that they can travel around safely when we do have these icy situations. We pray you watch over our city staff as they deal with those, those conditions and make our city a wonderful place to live in. We pray that you watch over the activities that we have been furnished tonight, that they, our results may be pleasing to you and pleasing to those we serve. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen. Now, reading and approval of minutes from December eighteenth.
Motion to approve and suspend reading.
Motion by Weider.
Second.
Second by Pillar. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you. Approval of the agenda. Any changes? Monty, you be good?
Just cross off the engineers here, they have nothing. It's not bad.
Okay, that means nothing to pay them either.
Motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Motion by Pillar. Second by Weider. Discussion. All in favor of the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Okay, request of citizens, local permits, toll country, ammo rescue, and then another permit for Hayes and Lyons Club. You can do it individually or together?
The one is a rap ball and the other one is using City Hall?
Yeah. And like I pointed out in the notes, as far as the Lyons Club one, we may have to review this in the future because they didn't have dates for the community events. And under the new rules through the Attorney General, those all have to be specified when the permit is granted, so.
Okay.
So for this point, it'll probably just be the calendar app of which they know is April fifteenth to May twenty-fourth.
Motion to approve both.
Motion by Weider.
Second.
Second by Stern. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. All right, we have nothing under seven or eight. Water sewer report.
Hey, we had a little visit before the meeting tonight. Dave brought to my attention our, our new water employee, had his first day today, was successful. Uh, got, got great in there sucking out manholes and stuff like that and, and commented to the staff at the end of the day that he'll be back again tomorrow, so that's a, that's a good sign. And then we, we have on the agenda for this next year, the relining of several of the manholes in town. We're going to systematically continue to go after those. We did find one over by the supermarket that is damaged and what was not on our original list, so we'll have some further discussions whether we will pursue potentially adding another manhole or if we will just go ahead and take one of that was on our original list for this year and move that one out and, and go after this one here that's damaged. But the ones that we have had done so far for the city have been, it's, it's really been well worth, I think, the, the expense and stuff like that, so we're going to continue down that path.
Good, thank you.
That's all I have for this evening.
Any questions for Dan? All right. Thank you. Okay, Streets, Jason's not here. Dave, what's going on?
Well, just finishing up vehicle maintenance, uh, driving around, checking a few, some of the intersections have been scraping as it softens up a little bit to try to smooth them out. I mean, it's been a hot off with three out now. Snowgate, he is working on it and he said he's monitoring the weather. If it looks good, he does squeak in a couple other projects or whatever and then goes back on ours, but he is working on it, so he's getting closer.
Snowmowers ready to roll?
Yes.
Wow, I know, I know. All right, moving down to finance, Busting. So, anything for this team? Weider, police fire Forest Street.
All right, I got the calls in service for last month for the Police Department. We got seventeen calls in service for Officer Byer, twenty-two calls in service for Officer Anthony Melber, thirty-five for Officer Samantha Melber, and fourteen for Chief Wolf. Also do have a quote for the sidearms for the Police Department. Finally, we got in touch with a lady, we got a quote for her, that is four, four pistols which they currently have five because they do have a spare. The quote is for, thirty-four hundred dollars?
Two.
Two hundred dollars, about, am I right?
Thirty-two eighty-nine.
Thirty-two eighty-nine, twenty-eight, with four of them with the red dots on them. They are four Glocks. We were talking to Jim, he thought of all possible, we ordered five and replaced in all five of the SIG. After I just talked to him in the hallway, he said, no, just stay with the four and one of the officers might buy their SIG from us and keep carrying the SIG. So, I believe one of the Glocks as a spares. So, see, I, I would like to make the motion to approve the purchase of the four Glock forty-fives with red dots on them.
Okay, motion by Weider. Second, second by Stern. Discussion.
I don't know much about sidearms and stuff like that. They presumably have a life to them?
Yes and no. Parts do wear out in them. You know, you can shoot the rifling out of a barrel after so long. You can rewear them. There's one particular officer won't carry it. They absolutely cannot stand that sidearm.
The Glock?
No, the, the SIG.
Okay.
Most departments are going nine millimeters too because realistically it is better than the forty, plus you get less recoil with it, so you're quicker. You, you can get back on target faster. The Glocks are also lighter weight. You can get red dots on, so. I hate to say it's cheating, but it does make you a more accurate shooter once you figure out how to use them. It's a little training, especially like these officers, they, they do a lot of training with them, the iron sights. Going to a red dot, it's going to take some more training for them to get used to it if they haven't used them before, but it takes a bunch of variables out of it. Doesn't matter how you're holding it, if it's a red dot, it's on what you want, it's going to go there. We don't have to go with the red dot, but to give our officers the best advantage, I think it's well worth it. Thank you.
No, don't confuse red dot with a laser. It's not a laser dot.
No.
No, it's not. So, I know some people think with the red dot, you think of Terminator or whatever, there's a red dot, laser dot on something, that's not the case. It's a red hole.
It's a red hole.
So then I guess, so this isn't going to be, I guess, mandatory, though?
No. Um, as of right now, we don't have a policy on that. I guess we could go down their avenue if we really wanted to make it mandatory, but I really hate doing that because if somebody can't shoot something, you know, accurately, why would you force them to carry it? You know, some, some sidearms won't fit certain people, you know, different size hands and stuff like that, so. We would have talked about selling all the SIGs, though, and then if that officer continually wants to carry it, he would actually purchase it from the city and it'd become his sidearm. So he'd be responsible for all maintenance on it and stuff like that. Or she, I guess.
So then as of now, I guess we only have one, one officer, I guess, that doesn't want these, yeah?
That I'm aware of.
They were.
There's one that's uncertain that I, because I've never shot them before. I asked a particular officer and they couldn't give me an honest opinion because they've never shot one before, so. He didn't say he wouldn't carry it, but he didn't say he would carry it either.
Any more questions? The discussion. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Weider, aye. Stern, aye. Pillar, aye. Omen Hour, aye.
Motion carried. The next one discussed?
Oh.
Vehicle.
Yeah, vehicles. So I did get ahold of Cap Fleet Down in Texas, asked them if they had any SSD or PPD topless, and he laughed at me. He's got two thousand on order for twenty twenty-four, he's expecting five hundred, and he said twenty-five looks pretty much the same from what he's getting from his reps that they deal with. So he told, basically told me, as being a small department, you ain't getting one anytime soon if you're dead set on a topple. But he did say that they have some Durangle's coming in here first quarter and some PTV Silverado pickups that I didn't actually know that they made until he mentioned it to me. Your GM is now making the police vehicle in a pickup.
Is that a four-door?
It is a four-door, comes with the steel wheels, the bigger Brembo brakes, a better suspension, the better wiring, just like every PTV vehicle out there. It's just in the Silverado package versus, you know, a topple package. And he is expecting some of them in second or third quarter this year that are not spoken for. So I got some of that information to Tony, because I know neither of them, they were real keen on, but I'm like, we, we got to pick something here, you know, we can't keep kicking the can down the road. Eventually it's going to bite us. Once he looked into the pickup, he really leaned towards the pickup. He actually really liked the setup of it. So, we just had a meeting with the Police Department here just a few, few minutes ago, and I asked Tony if he would actually get ahold of this person, I'm going to give him the phone number, and get us a true quote from him, and we'll go from there.
They do those with toppers then, or just tunnel cover?
Um, can do whatever you want. Tunnel cover, topper, um, he said a hard shell, which I think is hard.
Hard tunnel cover, yeah, with pullout.
They have waterproof pullout boxes that go in the back, so in the backseat, it's, it's like a split portion, if you've ever seen for the K-9 units, they got a part for their K-9, part for wherever they need to get rides to. This would be more of that setup, so you can put your AED and all your other stuff that you don't want sitting out in the cold the entire time. It's not ideal, you know, it'd be nice to have the whole backseat for use, but they're going to look into it, they just think that the Durangle's going to be too small. Unless it's nice that we do have a GM D or he or we in town too, versus if we have one, you were trying to get it to Bismarck all the time, it's, could be a pain.
So it might cost us a little bit more as well for some accessories type things and I guess we don't have much for options anymore, it's like, so.
So, once I get that stuff from Tony, I'll bring it to you guys and we can go from there.
Okay.
As far as I got.
All right, thank you.
If you want to add anything, shoot time.
Um, I'll, I'll touch on the meeting here, undermine, we'll hit with Buster, HCD.
Be quiet tonight.
Nothing going on, huh?
Can you share Christmas?
That's your present to us?
No, I don't, undermine, we just, more of the meeting, but Dustin and the police officers, I know it was very, very productive meeting. We just talked about how, how we as a group can approve, you know, you know, talk about how the Police Department's a piece of the puzzle, we're a piece of the puzzle in this room, you know, and how we need to just make that big puzzle come together. And one of the things is communication, you know, I think we're, we all agree, I think we're lacking on some communication. One of the things I talked about that I would love to see, as, as an athletic director and the current athletic director, you know, having, having a police officer step inside of Jim Hazen during an event for five or ten minutes. They don't have to be there, watch a whole game, they don't, you know, have to walk through the crowd, shake hands and kiss babies, just, just to show up and be present for a few minutes, I think, I always thought it was, I thought it was effective, just to be visible. And I think, you know, that, you know, sometimes we're busy and can't, that can't happen, but, you know. So we had a good discussion about that, if you have any other thoughts, but no, it was a good, good department meeting. That's all I have under my report. The next item on, at number eleven is the confirmation of special assessments, but I, you know, before we recess, we can, we can do number twelve. County, Monty, do business. So we'll pop down to twelve. The election agreement. Monty, you want to talk about that, please?
Um, not much to say, this, the, the agreement is basically the same as all the previous years. I did read in the papers that the city of Hazen is, is a designated polling location for this year's elections, so. And the cost to the city is only a dollar cost to program the machines and the ballots for our races, so. Otherwise, the county handles all the rest, the morgue that's at the polling location and then the canvassing board as well, so.
So we need a motion just to confirm that, or?
Yes.
Okay, agreed to.
Make motion to approve the elec-, election agreement.
Okay, motion by Weider.
Second.
Second by Pillar. Discussion. So then, so then, so then I guess, so this is only good for, I guess, one year, Monty?
Basically this election cycle, yeah. They present a new one every time there's an election cycle.
So presumably they, they've been cycling it between the, the communities because we did Ula before and we lost there.
Yeah, okay.
Another discussion. Roll call, please.
Weider, aye. Pillar, aye. Stern, aye. Omen Hour, aye.
Motion carried. Okay, at this time, I think we'll take a, an eleven-minute recess, and, and we will then convene our public hearing at six o'clock. So, good time for a break. At this time, we're going to call a meeting in order for the public hearing for the Special Assessment Project twenty twenty-two dash oh-one. And, uh, this time we'll take public comment, and then we're going to have Pat explain what he handed out to us in layman's terms. So, anybody from the public who'd like to speak?
I'd like to speak, but I want Pat to speak first.
You want Pat to speak for you?
No.
Oh.
God, no.
We'll make sure that's in a minute, so.
I don't think I want anybody here to speak for me. I can speak for myself, but, uh, I, I want you to explain clearly what this is, what this is.
He, he will, but we're letting the public speak first.
Well, I don't want to be getting ass with myself, I want him to say what's in here first and then I will speak.
Well, let me tell you first, Sheriff, you, you won't make a fool of yourself if anything is said. I respect your research and I always respect public's opinion on these things, and I think you should speak to what you already prepared yourself to speak for.
I think, I have no problem speaking.
An attack dog here, so.
Please do. Okay. This is the district, as the City Commission said it was, the district. It clearly is marked that there is a commercial district and there is a residential part of district. This is no man's land where it's storage. I don't know what you would consider that as personal storage, think it doesn't create any economy. This is a money-making business, this is a money-making business supposedly, uh, and we are the three people that live on this, in this district. We live there. These people come and go to work every day, but they don't live there. We live in this district, okay? In the resolution of necessity, um, that was filed by the city, it says in there that the assessment should not exceed the benefit to be derived. And also, it was stated in the hearing that especially benefits, okay? They have said that, uh, the, we went to the assessment committee meeting, it was, you know, they seemed to think that we couldn't understand. We understood how they made their assessments, but we did not agree with how they made their assessments. And in their assessments, they said that I would benefit five thousand dollars from having that alley behind my house here. Here I am, over here in the corner, and they said my property benefits five thousand dollars from this alley up here. They said Rogers, thank you, they said Rogers Ferraris would benefit seven thousand five hundred, and they said Rhonda would benefit, um, three thousand fifty-seven from the, or seven thousand five hundred from the project. And none of us think that we benefit anything from that project, not a thing. It doesn't, the, the excuses that they gave us, the assessment, they were trying because they said, but you make all the decisions anyway, they don't really have any power. You give them all the information and then they just put it, plug it into a formula and say what is what. The benefit, I guess from reading some of what, um, Pat gave me, it sounds like you guys can do whatever you want to anyway, so it doesn't make a lot of sense, maybe this whole protest, do anything if you can do what you want. But, uh, it, I, you'd have to show me how I benefited five thousand dollars from this. And then they said, well, it improves your drainage. Well, we just, in, um, the street project, in, uh, project twenty eighteen oh-one, our block was in that project. It was finished in, uh, twenty twenty. And our three, three properties, these three properties paid a total of thirty-one thousand dollars, um, twenty-three thirty, for the street improvement because they found clay pipes that were in, that the city had missed somehow in their previous things, so they had to replace the pipes. So therefore, we were all assessed a lot of money. Uh, Rhonda, since she has a double lot, paid fifteen thousand eight hundred thirty-three forty-three. At the time, it was Mrs. Shapowski lived here, she paid seven thousand two hundred eighty-five, and I paid seven thousand nine hundred and four forty-seven for this street improvement. Now, they told us the same thing when they did this first street, uh, southwest, uh, street improvement, it was supposed to improve our drainage. Well, guess what? Every time it rains heavy in the summer, our whole corner still floods. It didn't do anything. I noticed now at the end of the block, just like before they put the concrete alley in, there's a big dip here that's full of water and stuff, the drainage, the, you know, it hasn't improved any drainage. I do find the city needs to find a different way to pay for commercial projects and not to put unfair tax burdens on residential properties. If the commercial area can't finance these projects, then it's the job of the State Commission to find other methods, not to put the burden on three, the three closest to residential properties. Uh, at the, at the, um, assessment meeting, it was said, asked if I thought I was special and I should have special treatment, and all I'm asking for is legal and fair treatment. And, you know, as far as I could read in the century code, now this is a law case, I think, and so case law, which I wasn't reading case law, but, uh, I don't know that, that, I don't know if it would hold true for everything or not. You have to take it to court. Let me see. What other projects have you done that included both commercial and residential?
Well, that last street project you talked about, that was.
What?
That, that last project you talked about, with your street?
Yes.
That had, that included, that was citywide, there was a lot of spots.
That was a citywide project, yes, but what areas have you made the district that included residential and commercial properties where the benefit went to the commercial properties?
Well, I would, I would suspect that the, uh, when we had the, the districts defined and stuff like that, up around the, the hospital area, you would have the hospital and you'd have the hotel and, and some of those other commercial businesses, and those blocks would be defined in such a manner that they would be a combination of residential properties as well as the commercial there. And so.
I guess I would like the information on that.
The approach that we, we attempt to do is to try to be consistent from project to project, how we, how we go about this. And, for instance, when we did the citywide street projects, there would be districts or areas that were a combination of maybe a hospital and then residential there, and we tried to treat those the same way, then we'd go to the next project. This here, this alleyway, we have to define a district so that we have a starting point there, and so what we did was, to be consistent with how we've done previous projects, we did it on a, on the block, the full block that was containing the area that, that had the improvement.
Does inconsistent include fair? That would not be my idea. It's not fair for residential areas to have to pay for this project, it really isn't. Me, if you would come and stand and watch all day, you would see that the post office and WRT are the ones that use and benefit from that alley. How do I benefit from that alley? You haven't given me any reason for me to benefit from that alley. And like we said in our previous meeting, we are the three less likely people to use that alley. We walk and get our mail. Rhonda walks and gets, gets her mail. Mr. Ferrari drives his. Mr. Ferrari drives his wheelchair up the block to get his mail. We don't use that alley. It's, it's nothing we use at all. And I just think that there has to be more thought into making these districts. It, it needs to be fair. There needs to be fairness. I mean, you guys are supposed to represent all of us, not just the city. You represent me too, not just the city. And it's, I think that you're, you're failing on your job when it comes to representing the citizens of Hazen.
Mrs. Rush, we appreciate your comments. I'm glad you guys are here. Like Pat said, we, we're glad you're vocal. Thank you. And this is your right to do that. So we try to be fair. There, it's, it's very hard to be, the word fair is very vague and very general. I don't, you know, it's.
I can explain to you.
I'm sure you can.
And I can explain what not fair is also.
Well, I, but you can definitely be a part of the City Council anytime you want, if you want to reference the spots.
No.
I, exactly. So thank you for being here and for your, your words. Pat, would you kind of explain a little more about what this case law talks about?
If it's all right, Mr. President, if I could just first address a couple of.
Absolutely, please do.
North Dakota does have a separate set of statutes for street improvement projects for just residential areas. And they describe a residential area as a block in which 60% or more of the property abiding in the street shall be residential property. So even under a residential, you wouldn't qualify as a residential block.
It has to be a square block you're talking about? Or just one?
A block. That is the typical.
We are a block.
Of the entire block.
We are from street to street.
Right. And it would require 60% of the residents to be considered residential, 60% of the area to be residential, to be considered residential area. So you wouldn't qualify into that for a residential project. But that's just an aside, just to let you know that you're not alone. In fact, to show how much you're not alone, if, if I can just read a couple. There's a guy by the name of Scott Wagner. He, he, he's done many special assessment projects for Hazen, he worked for all over. He's an attorney who represents bond companies that sell bonds for these kind of special improvements. And he had a son who was going to law school, who was the editor of the U of D Law School Journal, Legal Journal, that's published periodically. And he was asked to write an article on special assessments and the history. And I can give you the site if you want to look it up, because you guys are good researchers and you can find the whole article online. But even though he's an advocate for special assessments because he gets his living off of it, he quotes what our Supreme Court has said. And if I could just read a, a couple of these quotes, these are from our Supreme Court. "It's natural for the average property owner to resent the burden thus laid upon him. And he easily persuades himself that the thing for which he is asked to pay is a detriment rather than a benefit to his land. And ordinarily, it is not difficult for him to find plenty of sympathizing neighbors who will unite in supporting his contention." They, they then go on to say in another case, "In wintertime, pavement is of no use. And in summertime, a day or two of wind and sunshine puts the streets in a splendid condition. And so a pavement can be of no real benefit only during the few days of the spring and autumn. Then it does appear that the northern part of the city is largely composed of lowly homes, where the children need bread and butter and clothing more than they need a pavement for a few days of the year." So, you know, there's, the Supreme Court is not happy about it either. They went on to say in, in one of their cases, "It's really time that the courts should insist upon a greater care and a stricter compliance with the fundamental law in the case of special assessments. The real fact is that any kind of taxation by means of special assessment comes dangerously near to a violation of the constitutional provision of property and a property owner's from harsh and unequal burdens. There is hardly any so-called special improvement which does, which does not rebound to the benefit of the whole community if indeed it benefits anyone at all. Such improvements are often forced upon persons who are absolutely unable to pay for them and who really derive no benefit whatsoever from their construction." Cases indeed are numerous where poor men have bought property, built their homes upon credit, which they would not have bought and could not have afforded to build it if it were not for the cheapness of the land, and who afterwards, and because other persons have desired improvements, often merely for commercial purposes alone and to enhance the value of outlined property, have been confronted with special assessments far in excess of the original cost of the property to them. Many of the mortgage has been foreclosed, not because the mortgage or home builder would have been unable to pay it standing by itself, but because the added burden of unanticipated special assessments has been more than he could bear. So you're not alone. Everybody hates them. Nobody wants that special assessment. But it's been found that it's the only, it's the most, one of the most challenged procedures in law, special assessments. And nearly every time, the plaintiffs lose because the legislature has delegated this authority at the local level to the local special assessment, well, first the City Commission, then the Special Assessment Commission, and counties, the County Commission, which they're struggling with right now too, if you're probably following that. So this is an ongoing issue that isn't going to make, you're not going to have 100% of the happy people. We're going to have disappointed people. I lived on Main Street when they did a big project. I paid for a huge chunk of what I consider not an improvement to me. They tore out my paved driveway and put it paved, and said I had to pay for it. I said, I have a payment there. I didn't get anything for that, you know? But that's the way it went, you know? What I've given this group tonight is the only case that we have decided in North Dakota on the issue that you have challenged, which is, has to do with proceeding with the special assessment improvement. That's done. You can now challenge the benefit as you are and the way the special assessment was divided. And that's what you're really challenging. That is outside of that special district or special property. According to what our Supreme Court has said, the only thing that qualifies as a special property is something that's ordinary. Separate from the content is clear that the term separate property means geographically separate or non-contiguous areas. That means you're on one block, you're considered contiguous. You are all, the only thing separating you is the project itself. Well, there's actually another, you have another alley that could have been improved. You could have got assessed if they had chose to do that one too, but.
They assessed people for that door alley.
No, I know.
They did that too, which is.
Yeah. But other than that, you're not a special area. So you don't qualify under that separate property rule. It's exclusively given to the city.
Why wouldn't commercial and residential be separate?
It is for zoning purposes, but that's, that's where the difference lies, is in zoning, not in special assessments. And because a property is zoned differently, doesn't mean it has to be special assessed differently. That's up to Special Assessment Commission. That's where you're talking about pointing the finger at somebody else. Yeah, Special Assessment could say, well, they put commercial property in a, in a, made a separate zoning district just for commercial property. Then we have all the commercial property people here saying, hey, we're not the only ones that benefit. Our properties benefit, so do the residents who drive us benefit.
The whole city benefits from it, but not just the three of us.
And that's what we're discussing later, but.
Not you, the three of us, the whole city. I'll be like here from the whole city. If everybody pays something, I'll pay that too for the boat company and the post office. But why should the three of us be the ones that share, or have to pay for that?
Well, I've tried to explain that, but obviously I haven't done very well, so. Anyway, that's sort of the background on these kinds of assessments. If you're, you have a difficult path, but you have the power and there's clearly a known special property involved here. This is all for assessment purposes, one contiguous unit.
It's not geographically separate, like you talked about.
Right, yeah.
All right. Any other comments? The public hearing? If there's not, then we're going to close the hearing. We'll continue on with our regular meeting to, for confirmation of the special assessment. So you do the last comments. Okay? This time we will adjourn the public hearing. And we will, well, we recessed our other meeting, right?
Yeah, we're convening.
So we're re-convening our regular board meeting. And that'll take us down to Old Business Number 11, the confirmation of the special assessment for Hazen Improvement Project District 2022-01. Did you, did everybody get a chance to re-look at the opportunities to change the, or Monty and I talked, came up a couple formulas on, on the buy downs. And, you know, normally we do a 10% buy down on, on these projects.
So, and I'm sad that they left because I think there, there was an opportunity to express that the city, in fact, Citywide does have a piece of the, the pie here. And so it, it's not all of the expense of that project is being built upon the citizens and the commercial properties that are part of the, the project. It is a portion of that is being funded by City, Citywide, which invariably comes down to all of the tax-paying residents of the city of Hazen, so.
Absolutely. I was hoping they would stay as well.
Yeah.
That's okay. Monty, you want to, can you explain a little more towards, speak towards how the improvements and the, kind of the tiered?
Oh, that I don't, that I didn't agree with.
I have the 10, 15, and 20.
So normally, when we, when we do these projects, historically, has it been a fixed percentage that, that the city would go?
Yes.
And that was.
Since we started buying down projects with the sales tax, we've always bought them down 10% of what the cost of the project was.
Okay.
So one of the ideas was, well, if we do a project, one of the examples I had was the cost is $0 to $100,000. We buy it down with sales tax up to 25%. Or if it's over $100,000 to $250,000, we buy it down 20%, you know? And just kind of tier that so as the project cost gets higher, you're using less percentage of the sales tax dollars so that we don't complete that grid. Because, you know, we rely on that. The idea behind the sales tax was to reduce costs to the, to the residents.
Excuse me, Monty, is there also, if I may, does, doesn't the state still also have a tax assistance for those who are extremely, who qualify for the payment for special assessments by the state? Which then becomes a lien, I know.
Yes, yes, there is still a home state credit for special assessments. And like you said, then the state takes a lien on the property. And that lien has to be satisfied before they can dispose of the property or anything else. That lien stays on there.
But it postpones the payment initially for the property owner. So there are programs within the state to help out with those who are overly burdened by the tax.
And those would be the responsibility of the individuals to pursue those. Yeah. Make an application, yes. Okay. And there, there again, that would have been a nice discussion to share with, with the residents. Now, I can share that with them, that's not a problem.
Yeah, that would be awesome.
Plus Dan writes up a good rate up in the papers. It'll be, it'll be very clear there too.
We'll give them a link to the application.
You know, there has been a, you know, so we have set a precedent with 10%. But if we did change that, it doesn't mean we can't change that. It doesn't mean we, and it doesn't also mean that we're handcuffing commissioners down 10, 15, 20 years down the road. Because obviously, you can change as you, as you wish. Hopefully, our community is bigger, stronger, and more viable in 20 years. And, you know, these projects are going to be, you know, happy to watch and, and they'll be able to pay for it. We are, right now, we are in a better situation with sales tax dollars than we've been. Monty?
You're going to answer?
Ever? Yeah, yeah. So talking about, oh, sorry. If we did do something different, right now, 10% buy down is $6,627. The correct, Monty?
Correct.
If we did, if we chose to buy down at 15%, then our, then our portion then goes up to $9,900. So there's, there's, Monty's got a bound cord there. So I, I would propose that we would bump this to, the city would pay a 15% buy down on this project. And then we looked at using our tiered, the tiered process like Monty explained, for future projects that are larger as well.
So the, the tiers that have been forwarded to us, this, this would fall under the 15% category of that tiered process?
Yes, it would. Actually, this would be under the, if we went with the one that I presented to you, this would be actually at a 25% tier.
Yeah, okay. I, I hear what you're saying, Jerry. I think if we're going to discuss and approve the idea of the tiered process, you draw the line in the sand and you got a starting point. And if we're going to establish that tier in the, in the format that was served out to us, then I think this project here would fall under that as well, if that's the, the path we go. I think it sends two different messages if you say on this particular one, we're going to do this, but moving forward, we're coming up with this new tier.
Well, better, you were just looking at those tiers, you know?
Or just, yeah.
Maybe you just go 0 to a quarter million is 15%.
Yep, no, I understand.
And stay within these boundaries.
I'm just saying, if we talk about a tiered system moving forward, whatever that period of time might be into the future, I think this project here would be the starting point of that tiered process. So I think there needs to be consistency between the two decisions.
Correct. And we have another alley project on the horizon. And what we do with this needs to be, we should, we should, in my opinion, we should do the same with that, that next project. I'm open for discussion and thoughts on what you, what you guys think about that information.
I, I guess I, oh, go ahead.
Okay, so you go ahead.
So I mean, so I mean, I guess. so I mean, I guess even on this process of, process of, I guess, you know, process in the specials and stuff. All that stuff, I don't think is ever fair, you know, but but anyway, I guess we gotta do is what we gotta do, but and then, and then two, you know, even if this project was then project was, I guess, like part of the project was part of the, I guess, of the larger than exact street project, you know, you know, then after that, you know, then you know, then, then you know, then you know, then on the tiers, because all the tiers, I guess, wouldn't have really mattered then. And then two, even if we are going to pay the next more, on this project, or in the business that then business that then I guess won't pay the next property tax is going to get the most of its benefit out of it. Even though I don't know if that's fair.
Again, fair is tough. You're right, I agree.
So I mean, I mean, me, I would like to pay pay down pay down pay down on the max, I guess, max percentage on them. Max percentage over on, then I mean, I mean, over on all the projects, I guess, then I guess moving forward, you know, I mean.
You would?
Yeah. The reason why, because maybe then, all these projects, I guess, we won't just then, you know, just go ahead and just go do them, you know, maybe then.
A bit more skin in the game.
Yeah, yeah, a bit more skin, so.
I see where you're coming from, yeah.
Question, question I have you, Pat. The comment being, we're not locking future commissions, next year, and the year after, and the year after type into, you know, sticking with this necessarily. From a legal standpoint, precedence is a pretty powerful thing, I'm assuming. And if we say, we're going to go with this tier here, and then two years from now, we do another big project, but that commission says, you know, we decided to change the tiering structure. We're not going to have the tiers anymore. Are we, are we not opening up the city then to?
Well, so in my opinion, no, for this reason, you know, precedent, we think of legal precedents.
Okay.
Where interpreting language that it has not been interpreted before or requires interpretation. The, in a body such as yourselves, you're supposed to be discretionary. You are supposed to use your discretion and apply it to individual activities. If it's inconsistent with the law, well, of course, then precedence sets in.
Okay.
But at your level, I'd say, no, because that's what you're charged with.
Okay.
Sure, 2035, coal becomes obsolete. Obviously, our sales tax.
Fair enough. I just, I just wanted to make sure, sure it's none of us, our acting attorneys, that, you know, we're coming up with something because we're trying to be empathetic and support our citizens in these decisions. Because we too are citizens in this community. I just want to make sure that we're not overstepping then, the authority that we're given.
And you're asking from my opinion. There are attorneys who they believe that precedence is sacred on all levels. I don't.
Okay.
I guess my thought was if it was somehow in the ordinance that when the board reorganizes after an election, you, it's part of their process then, when you appoint your committees and everything else, that they look at this and say, well, okay, this is what we're going to follow for the next two years till the next election.
And I'm good with it. You know, it, it falls into the, into the same realm of us looking at our various policies that we have in place. We are continuously taking a look at some of the different things that we've had on the books for 20, 30 years or whatever, and now we're saying, well, let's reexamine that and see if in today's time, that makes a whole lot of sense. And like you said, things can change in our economy here that would blow this completely out of the water and stuff like that, so. Yeah, that word fair, that is very, very tough. And, you know, I like to believe that when we do have these discussions and we were setting these boundaries and stuff, the idea of being consistent, you know, is in my mind, being fair to the guy that on the previous project got hit with a big assessment because of the way that it was done. If now we're switching the way we're doing it, and you look back in time and say, well, had we done it back then, then this guy wouldn't have had to pay as much. We are trying to be as fair as possible in a, in a system that maybe isn't always fair. I don't want, I don't want to put it on anybody in our, in our city to have to pay more taxes. Now, that's no fun. But we also have to make sure that our infrastructure stays intact and is going to be viable for years and years to come. My, my opinion is I like the tiered. You draw that line in the sand and you move forward. Yeah, I like also incorporating it into a changing of the guard or, you know, and I don't know how you define that because we have elections every year, right?
No, every two years.
Every two years. So if you tied it into the every two year thing and that just becomes part of the mandate then for the new commission to sit down, examine this. And, you know, I don't know what the basis of making the changes is. If that's rubbing your crystal ball to see how many projects we're going to be doing and what, you know, that type of thing. And how that would relate to the type of monies we're going to have coming into the city. There has to be some rationale to it, other than shaking the dice and saying, okay, well, this year we're going to do 5, 10, and 15, or whatever.
And I think we're moving toward that with the capital improvement plan that Warren has worked on, saying, this needs to be done within the next five years, this needs to be done. So you've got some of that already laid out for you. And, and the more I thought about it, I was thinking 20% would probably be a good maximum.
If you go, so what we're seeing up on the board there, the 10, 15, and 20, and then we would have
And then create your tiers with 20 as a max.
The tiers that you had defined in that other document. Yeah.
Go ahead, Pat.
And also, you know, think of legislative bodies and congressional bodies. I mean, they don't say, well, we never used to have an income tax. And if I'm in the Constitution, we never had an income tax. How can we have one now? That's unprecedented. But every state, every time a legislature meets, they change our tax laws or change our formulas for how your revenue is redistributed. You have to adjust, yeah.
Yes, I agree.
Casey, you got another comment?
So yeah, I was just curious about the deemed, I guess, value. And after that, then it's what's that, what is then, what is then, I guess, assessed?
Yes.
That didn't seem to match up, I don't understand what.
Well, of the
So 10% of 59,000 isn't 6,600, is that what you're saying?
Maybe it was on that, on that deal, I guess, that it was drawn up, yeah. And something about the deemed, I guess, yeah.
Yeah. So what I assumed, and I didn't pull my calculator out, is that at the 10%, 15%, 20%, we take that off of the overall number, right from the get-go. Then the percentage breakdowns that the assessment committee put together for those individual properties then were applied to the remaining balance, right? Correct, okay.
Correct. And the initial cost for the project was 66,270. So that's why we take that off the top, so the assessment amount will be the 59,000. And that's, that's where you come up with the other numbers then. So if we pay the 13, the residents and the businesses will be assessed.
From the initial assessment, based on the 10%.
Right.
Okay. I know I'm full, I don't always explain things well.
Well, that's what I did read, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, this one here.
Oh, okay.
So it says, I guess, what the benefit is, but then the amount, I guess, well, then I guess that was assessed?
I see.
What?
Yeah.
Yeah, the special assessment committee comes up with a benefit that their assessment cannot exceed. So when they look at it, they're saying there's at least a $5,000 benefit to this property, but we're assessing the 1,200 or whatever.
Okay.
Let's see, she, real quick. All right, now this one, Monty.
Yeah, yeah. See, and that's, that's what she had referred to, Cheryl had referred to in her notes there too regarding that the assessment can exceed the amount of the benefit. So they have to establish a benefit amount and then the assessment amount based on whatever formula they're using. So they're saying that these have no, like, her property would have no more than a $5,000 benefit, no matter how you look at it. But they'll assess her 1,288.
Yeah.
How would you guys like to proceed?
Well, I would see if I can, see if I can do this motion here, Monty. I would like to make a motion that we approve the tiered structure based upon a 0 to 250,000 project cost, having 20% of that be covered by the city's sales tax. If the project were to be 250,001, up to $500,000, that the city's sales tax would cover 15% of that project. And then for projects 500,001 or more, that the city's sales tax would cover 10% of that. The decision for this tiered process would be effective as of the vote and would be reexamined on a what do you call it, biannual?
Biannual.
In, in alignment with the new or maybe not new, but
With the reorganization.
With the reorganization of the board.
Second, we have a motion by a pillar, and a second by a leader. Discussion. Casey?
So then, so then, so then I guess, even if this street project was done, or if this project was done, done then, it's like during the street project, then I guess they wouldn't get any more.
Correct. But we also have to be fiscally responsible as it, as it concerns the, the sales tax fund, which we use for other things within the city as well. So I mean, there's only so much money, you know, I've, I've referenced that with citizens before where they, you know, maybe you don't put enough sand, well, okay, well, we can put more sand. That's going to cost more, and it's going to cost more to clean that up. So what part of city do you not want supported with the tax money that's going in? Because there's only so much money in that pool. And that's, that's the same thing with the sales tax. We've been blessed in that it's been more in the last couple of years. And that's, that is the beauty of the every two years thing. You might see something that sales tax doubles again from what we've been experiencing. And if that becomes the new norm, then there may be opportunity to even kick this tier up a little higher to benefit folks out there. Yes, sir.
Is, does this tier apply only to the street improvement, or does it also apply to? Street improvements, as opposed to water and sewer, for example, can be protested out where water and sewer cannot be protested out. So would this apply, the tiers, at least for now, just apply to the street improvement project?
Before I answer that.
Or any special assessment.
Or any special assessment.
My, my question would be
Water and sewer, special assessment.
So, so anything that we would have special assessments that go back to the, to the citizens, whether they can be protested or not, are, have they been approached the same way from a 10% buy down and then? Yes.
Okay, I just want.
Yeah, I think I would say universal.
Casey, your thoughts?
Well, just on this project, I guess, I don't like that. You know, the biggest, I guess, largest one that's going to then make benefit from this, making a pay this property tax.
All right.
There is that
Appreciate that.
Fair, that fair word again. I hear you.
Having this tiered system, it'll kind of goes off of Casey's more teeth in the game. As a commission, it seems like we're more apt to jump to the smaller projects because it'll cost as much.
Yeah.
But we're also contributing more to it than in the large ones. We've time to hesitate to, because it is a lot of money.
Last project we did was six million dollars. Well, we didn't, you know, we do, we do what we need to do.
Yeah.
I don't think we're going to not do a project because, oh, we got to pay 20% of this project instead of 10. I don't, I hope we never think that way, but.
Hopefully, we are never forced to need to have to.
Right, true. Good point. Monty?
And to Casey's point, you know, generally, if you, if your district is only a block, it's going to be a smaller project that where less of the residents are affected by it. When you, like we did with the bigger ones, you know, then we do it more or less citywide. So the costs get broken down a lot better among everybody, so.
We have a motion in a second, and we've had some great discussion. Roll call.
Miller.
Hi.
Wade.
Hi.
Stern.
No.
Omenhour.
Right. Well, she carried, and I wish those ladies were here for that discussion.
Now you'll need to do a motion to confirm the assessments with a 20% buy down.
Oh, that's right, you're right. So at this point, we'll need a motion for the 20% buy down on this, on this project. Improve the project 2022 national one.
Yeah, so then the 20% columns here would be what would be certified as assessment. Then the only other question is how long you want the assessment to go?
You mean five, 10, 15 years?
Five, 10, 15, you can go up to 20 years.
Set up all in one motion?
You can do it in one if you want, or however you want to break it down.
So I'm guessing the answer to my question, if I say a job or a project this size, how, how long have we spread that out traditionally? Your answer is going to be, it's all over?
Mm-hmm. To a degree, yes. Generally, a project this small, you're looking at 10 to 15 years. The only nice thing about this one is we don't have to charge interest. We didn't go out and secure bonds that are interest-bearing, so. And you can put interest on if you want, you can do up to a half percent. And you can put interest on if you want. You can do up to a half percent.
We can do the percentage and the duration in one or two separate?
I'll make a motion that we administer the 20% sales tax buy down on this particular project for the duration of 15 years.
Motion by pillar.
Second.
Second by Weidrich. Discussion. Roll call.
Miller.
Aye.
Weidrich.
Aye.
Stern.
No.
O'Vallar.
Aye. Motion carried. That takes us to number 13. A public comment. Anything from public? Who's the one here?
No.
Okay. All right.
Give it in.
He's just glad it's over.
No, I saw when he came in, he had that loaded for bear.
Approve of the bills, please.
Motion approved.
Motion by Weidrich.
Second.
Second by Stern. Discussion. Roll call.
Weidrich.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
O'Vallar.
Aye. Motion carried. Thank you, guys. Thank you, Pat. Thank you for bringing this and your, your comments. I think that really, it's good to be in the game. I was, when you handed us that, I thought, oh, no, here we go, we're in trouble. No, you're right. You're right. Thank you.
Jerry, did you adjourn the meeting?
I did adjourn the meeting.